Guys, we have a little technical difficulties, but we're going to try to record it so that you can look at it later. Mayor, as I understand it, there's only two cases of coronavirus in the city currently. But can you speak to what's happening in the city and your thoughts on it? And from a business standpoint as well, Mayor Solanke, please?
Thank you, Desmond. You know, it's due to the public health emergency and caused by this novel coronavirus. We're facing really unprecedented time in our history. Our community, our city, entire country and the world. So the city of Saritos has taken many steps to make our community safe. We have closed all our parks, playgrounds. We have closed the city hall. It's only available with online or by appointments. And we have activated our EOC, Emergency Plans. And we're, you know, following everything that City of, I mean, the County of Los Angeles passes. And we just extension of whatever the County of Los Angeles tells us every day. We get all the updates pretty much on two or three times a day. And we implement those changes as we see. And we're just trying to keep our community safe, our residents safe. And our staff here working diligently and keeping up with all the changes that happening day by day. So it is really a tough time for all of us and especially the business. And I'm also in politics, but also in hospitality business. And that has taken a toll on our business. Our occupancy and everything has gone up down to 80%. So it's huge. And so it's the same thing. Our dealers facing the same challenge. Our hotels in local cities facing the same challenges. So it's going to be very difficult for everyone. But I think with federal and state help and we can all come together and hopefully we'll get over with this.
And is there anything particular, Mayor, that you suggest to businesses? Which is why this seminar is taking place? Anything you suggest, anything that the city can do to assist business other than what's coming down from feds and the state government?
Well, as you know, you know, that's a great question. But the city of Saritos used to have Luxury Operdorman Agency, which we don't have it any longer. So there's not much we as a city can do except can advise them to contact their mortgage company and see if they can defer their mortgages or their loans, et cetera. But the city cannot, not able to fund any or give any kind of funding assistance to any of the business currently.
I see. Thank you, Mayor. And then we're going to hear from ABC Unified School District, our superintendent, Dr. Mary Sue. Good afternoon, Dr. Sue. How are you?
Good afternoon. I'm doing well. Thank you.
Can you just update the citizens and the business people on the things that are happening in the ABC School District and how, you know, just what's taking place and what steps are being taken at this time?
So as some of you are probably already aware, our schools has been closed since March 16th. And they will remain to be closed up until May the 5th. Our staff members will be returning on May the 5th. And we anticipate that our students will be returning on May the 5th. But throughout this time, the reason why I have to engage with so many of our staff members is because we have been providing the online learning at home program as part of distance learning. But many of our families, for example, those who may not have a device like a Chromebook or even access to the internet at home, we have been providing them as well to all students who may not have a device or internet access. So we've already have delivered 4,000 devices to our students as well as over 900 hotspots. We call them hotspots. These are being able to help the families access the internet at home. I know that there's a lot of other programs that are out there delivering free, for example, free access for the families for the internet. But again, most of them, most of them are connected with a subscription later on. Anyway, so that's how we're, we are currently delivering the devices as well as the hotspots to all of our families. In addition to that, we have been able to still provide for meals for our students as well. It doesn't matter whether they paid for the meals or their low income. All of, we have about 10 schools that are disseminating the meals every day. And so when I say that, it's been since we've been on our break because we are able to be a part of a summer meal program and also to get waivers for a number of the schools. For example, over 3,300 meals have been delivered as, as part of Tuesday's Meal Delivery Services. Again, are at, let me just share the information. They are at Ferguson, Hawaiian, Melbourne and Nemus Elementary Schools. And then all of our high schools, including Artesia, Saritos, Gar High School and Whitney High School also provide these meals for families. Now, this is a grab and go concept where they drive in their cars. And again, our nutrition services people have packaged all of them. But when they come up and drive their cars through the schools, they can actually not engage with the families because we just need to know how many students are in the car. And so we drop them in the trunk of the car or just deliver it to the families inside the car. So again, this is over for 3,300 families, students that we've had going through this process. So that's been a major thing. So the other thing that I know that for many students who are home right now, I know that the families want some kind of a structure. And so we're going to be providing a structure for them because I know that since we started this online learning at home program, I know that it's kind of maybe frustrating for families to be able to provide a structure. So we're going to give an additional structure for families in terms of English language arts as well as math and science. All of these things are part of that online learning at home program. In addition to that, I just want to make sure that people are aware. We posted a number of things that are part of our district's website. The hotline, if people still have questions about schools of choice, for example. I know that for our district, this is the month for schools of choice. And normally it ends at the end of this month. However, we're extending it to May the 8th. So families, you know, who may be returning in May, they will still have opportunities. It doesn't matter when you sign up, whether it's the first part of March or the end, end of March. People can still sign up for schools of choice. And so we're going to give all of that information. It's always going to be on our website. So please go to abcusd.us to learn a lot of information about what we're doing right now in ABC.
Outstanding. That's exciting to know that there's online learning going on, that children are still learning during this time. And thank you for sharing that information. Oh, and the meals, that's important, that families are still being, that's so critical.
And again, again, please recognize, it doesn't matter whether you're high income, low income or middle income, families, we serve all families. We serve all the students who drive up for the grab and go meals. It doesn't matter.
That's wonderful. That's good to know. Great to know. Thank you, Dr. Mary Sue, Superintendent of the ABC School District. I'd like to hear now from Bradley Pollack. Bradley is the Small Business Development Center liaison. Bradley, could you tell us your title and how, what can small business do at this time to overcome all the challenges that they're being faced with this COVID-19 coronavirus situation? They have employees, they have payroll, some of them they have to, you know, pay lease fees. What are your thoughts on that, Bradley? How can you assist us, please?
Thank you for inviting me to be on the call. I appreciate it. My title to my children is, "Hey, you." But I'm the Director of the Long Beach Small Business Development Center, which is also known as the SBDC. And just very quickly about SBDCs, because it's important for small businesses to know this. The Small Businesses, Small Business Development Centers are about 1,000 around the country. And I direct, I'm the Director of the one in Long Beach, which serves Long Beach and Saritos and about 16 other cities in LA County. And what the SBDC does is provide guidance and information and education to small businesses. So in sort of normal times, if we can use that term, it's to businesses that are thinking of figuring out how to get started and to businesses that are already in business and want to grow. So it's business advising. And the business advising is, is offered by paid experts. The actual services themselves for our clients are no cost because we've actually already all paid for these services through our taxpayer dollars. So it's a no cost service to small businesses to get expert advice. And also under normal circumstances, you know, you can go to the SBDC in person. You can go and attend our workshops and so on and so forth. Right now, it's all obviously virtual advising. What's happening now in this situation is, just to give you an idea, you know, we might get, we might get 50 calls in a week at the Long Beach SBDC. We're getting that in one day. So, so the, the big need right now for businesses is to figure out whether to stay open, whether to put their, their teams on furloughs or to lay them off. It's a big, big, big question. And it's very different for every different, every business. Every business has its own situation. And so I can't give them across the board, this is what you should do. Nor would I ever pretend to be knowledgeable enough to say, this is what you should do. But I would say this, that for businesses that are trying to figure out what to do, all you have to do is you can call the Long Beach SBDC. We are here to serve the Saritos community for sure and proud of it. Call us and set up an appointment with us. And you, we will connect you with an advisor. And the advisor will help you walk through a few things that I'll mention in a second. And the number, if anybody wants to write this down, for the Long Beach SBDC is area code It's 562-938-5100. We've been working almost around the clock trying to sort of answer emails and so on and so forth. We're doing our best. There aren't many of us, so you have to bear with us, but we will get, we will get back to you. All right. So what are we talking about? I'm in business. I don't know what to do. The big thing is to have an understanding really of your cash flow. What are your cash flow requirements? And how can you develop strategies to manage that cash flow? And in understanding what your cash flow is, that will help you make some very important decisions. So that's item number one. Item number two is there is an emergency injury disaster loan for small businesses, up to $2 million per loan. Emergency Injury Disaster Loan, the acronym now is EIDL. And that's been the hot topic of conversation for the last week at least. And it's fairly straightforward in terms of how to apply for the loan. It's a process. And it's a process that requires what you might expect when you're applying for a loan, listing your assets, listing your liabilities. But it's for, it's for, it's an emergency injury disaster loan. So this is not just a regular loan. This is for those businesses that have categorically been impacted as a result of COVID-19, which of course is all of us, right? Showing that you have suffered a certain loss and that you need to offset that loss with a certain number of dollars, right? So this emergency injury disaster loan is something that I highly recommend you talk about with your, with your SBDC advisor. Or if you don't even want to go through the SBDC, my feelings aren't going to be hurt. But let me just tell people on, on this call what the, what the website is for to sort of look up the, the loan information. So it's disaster loan, all one word. And you know what I'll do is I will email this to the chamber and the chamber can distribute the URL. So no one has to sort of worry about whether or not they've got the correct information from me.
That's good, Bradley. Thank you.
If you're writing things down, it's disasterloan.sba.gov. Now, if you want a shorter version of how to get to this information, if you just go to sba.gov, that'll lead you eventually to understanding how to get more information about this loan. Now, very quickly, let me tell you the relationship between the SBA and the SBDC. Because there's a lot of acronyms. No one remembers what they are because it's not interesting. So the SBA, that stands for the Small Business Administration. And the SBA is a government agency, been around since the early 1950s, here to help businesses get started and grow. So the SBA administers the SBDC. So if you're wondering, what's the connection? What's the difference? Don't really worry about it, except you will hear about the SBA. So I wanted to explain what that is. The relationship is that the SBA administers the SBDCs. So then you get to the SBDCs. The SBDCs, the Small Business Development Centers, we work tightly with the SBA. And it's the SBA that has come up with this loan, this EIDL loan. This, this, the funding for this EIDL loan doesn't come from banks. It's unusual in the fact that it's the US Treasury that is supplying the funds for this, for this loan. But what's interesting to me as an advisor, a business advisor and as a Director of the SBDC is the, the rules, so to speak, are changing by the day. Because Congress is trying its best to get all different kinds of funding through. So what you want to do as a business owner is keep on top of it at the best of your ability by reading as much as you can about what's available. And at the SBDC, we can help you kind of understand this information. And in particular, we can help you understand how to sort of follow the process of applying for the loan. So, so what can we do as an SBDC to help the community right now? We can certainly talk with you about, about your cash flow and about how to manage that cash flow, which I highly recommend. We can also talk with you, by the way, as a business owner, we can help you think through other options that you might want to be thinking about, but that you haven't had the chance to think about creatively about how to augment the business that you're doing. If you're a brick and mortar and you're trying to figure out how to get online. If you are a restaurant, you're trying to figure out how to do takeout and delivery and so on and so forth. There are things that can be done. It's just, it's not all about the money. It's about how, how can we be creative to, to, to help our businesses? Okay? So we can help with that. I'm sure I'm missing some, oh, and then there's the whole world of HR/employment/employee, you know, everything with unemployment insurance. And there's a myriad of other things. And we are, as we speak, as a community, the SBDCs, trying to gather as much information as we can. Because we're not HR experts. We're trying to connect businesses with those who really do understand the HR world. I'm trying to figure out, should I fire people? Should I let furlough? Should I keep them? What's happening? It's, so that is a huge part of what's happening. So to recap very quickly, Small Business Development Center advises businesses, offers information, offers guidance. It's no cost to businesses. The experts are paid experts in their respective fields. You call us at 562-938-5100 and we'll hook you up with an advisor as soon as humanly possible. And I will get the email, the URL of the EIDL. I will get that to the Saritos Chamber so that it can be distributed. Sorry to take so long, but we're here to help in any way that we can.
Outstanding, Bradley. Thank you very much. And frankly, that cash flow situation is, that's good for family as well.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
So the knowledge piece. And that's a perfect segue. Thank you again, Bradley, for speaking with Ann Smith. Ann Smith is actually, she's a specialist. She's an attorney and her specialty is human resources. So perfect segue. Ann, good afternoon. Can you share with us your thoughts and what small business, business in general, should be doing, should not be doing due to all that's taking place now? Would you be kind enough to impart to our webinar participants how and what the right steps to take, please?
Good afternoon. And I'm really pleased to be here today to talk a little bit about what we can do during this time of crisis. Our office has been, the phone's been ringing nonstop with hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of individuals that are trying to deal with this crisis. Just like Bradley, we have a lot of employers calling us, trying to decide what to do. And just like our, our fine mayor, the hospitality industry has been just hit. Right? So we have employers that have hundreds of employees. They don't want to lay them off. They can't pay their wages. What to do? Is it better to put them on a temporary furlough? Is it better to close up shop? Is it better to just send them home and hope for the best? None of us really know what the best options are. But our government is coming up with great programs. And today I'm going to talk to you at least about some that will be very helpful for everyone during this time of crisis. So I want to go ahead and show you some slides so you have a better understanding of what is out there. Of course, we all know that it's a difficult time to get things done. And we know that Congress is usually probably the slowest organization ever. And yet we have had some laws passed. And in particular, the most recent law that was passed is called HR 6201. So first of all, let's talk a little bit about our coronavirus. What's the problem? It's, it's constantly evolving. We don't know the symptoms right away. So we have people working in our midst with coronavirus. That's a problem for all employers. We're doing our best. We want to make sure we know what the symptoms are. We want to send home employees that have symptoms. If we're working and we're an essential business, we want to continue to do our best to work. But we also want to be very cautious and comply with all of the rules with respect to distancing, with respect to cleanliness. And those are so difficult, but we want to try to make our, do our best to do that. With respect to HR 6201, this is the federal trying to come to our aid. This bill was passed on March 18th. It's effective April 1st. Very important for you to understand that it applies to all employers with 500 or fewer employees and the most public agency employers. And it creates a temporary sick leave and a temporary FMLA leave. And the most important thing about these programs is they're paid. This is an opportunity for our employees who are sitting at home worrying about whether they're going to be able to pay their rent, worrying about whether they're going to be able to eat to get some benefits. And the fact that they came through so quickly is pretty much a miracle in our country. But recognizing that the fact that there, these laws are coming down so quickly, it's a lot for everyone to process. And so some of the information you may have been hearing may have been a little premature, may have been incorrect. So I want to make sure you understand, this as of today is the correct information with respect to HR 6201. And the whole point is to assist employees that have been unable to work as a result of this crisis. So let's talk a little bit about the first leave. The first leave is a 12 weeks paid FMLA leave. Now, each of you might cringe at that, thinking, how on earth can employers who are at their wits' end with no money coming in make these payments? But that's the whole point. The federal government is providing tax credits will offset the entire cost of these programs.
Oh, good. Okay.
So this is a federal government program that's being put in place. This HR 6201 has two parts. The first part applies with respect to FMLA leave, which normally is an unpaid leave of absence. This particular leave though, it's called emergency FMLA leave. And it relates to employees who are unable to work only due to child and school care closure. So this relates only to parents. Parents that can't work because their kids don't have school. They have to stay home. This gives them an opportunity to get paid for 12 weeks. And there's very, you know, there's a lot of details with respect to it. But it is a great program as long as you fit the criteria of being an employee that can't work because their, their kids are home and someone has to watch them. The next program that HR 6201 has put in place is almost for everyone. This program is a paid sick leave program, which, which pays employees for 80 hours of sick leave. And the individuals that meet this criteria are individuals that are subject to a federal, state or local quarantine or isolation order. So for example, if there are businesses that are non-essential, we cannot allow people to work in factories or in areas with people that are together. Because they, we have a stay at home order that says we cannot gather. So that would be an isolation order. And that would be a quarantine order. And those orders then give us main that we are eligible to receive 80 hours of paid sick leave starting April 1st. In addition, of course, if you are, have symptoms of COVID, if you are caring for someone with symptoms of COVID, if you have been told that you have to self-quarantine. For example, you were the individual that fled from New York City to Florida. If you've been reading the news, Florida is requiring everyone that's arrived from New York to self-quarantine for 14 days. Those individuals and many others that are in quarantine, all of those individuals are going to be eligible for this federal program, which allows for paid sick leave for employees. This also includes part-time employees. And so these are, it's important for us to realize that as much as awful to be home, at least there's some programs being put in place that can help us with respect to making our payments that are necessary, right?
Yes. Ann, just one second. Ann, I understood it just got word that Mayor Solanke has another commitment. So he has to be off the webinar. So Mayor, I just want to say thank you very much for your leadership at this time and what you're doing for small business. You have always been a champion of small business. So we appreciate you, sir. Thank you for being on this webinar. Thank you for caring enough to be on the webinar, Mayor Solanke.
Thank you. But I would like to mention one more thing that, you know, the city has made available the information on our website for federal government, which they have given a $2 trillion as assistant program and.
The stimulus.
Perhaps the, the city and the chambers can come up with some kind of, you know, fair, once the recovery fair for all the businesses, like a one-stop shop to local businesses and obtain professional advice to help they can jumpstart their business or again. So that could be, you know, done in the future.
Okay. Definitely. Thank you again, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Have a great afternoon. Thank you for your support, sir.
Thanks, Dan. You're doing a great job.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Ann, I apologize. Please continue.
Yeah, no problem. So I wanted to be sure each of you had the opportunity to realize there are some programs out there that are being passed on an emergency basis. You should note that in addition to these two programs, there's also going to be some federal unemployment funds. And it's going to allow you to have unemployment for approximately four months. And the amounts that are going to be offered for unemployment are going to be drastically higher than the amounts that the state has offered in the past. And so all of those, uh, programs are being put in place uh, and are critical for our employees that are home that are not able to, uh, earn a living like many of us have been able to do by working remotely, right? Um, and during this time of crisis, I want to make sure that everybody understands that they should go back to their employer, talk with their employer, find out what programs are available. Because, uh, there are programs, it's taken a little while to put them in place, but as of April 1st, these programs are in effect, and you should be contacting your employer to talk about them. If you need any further information, our office is open and available to, uh, work with anybody that has any questions with respect to these programs.
Ann, could you give them your email and or phone number, please? So if a, if a business owner is watching this and has a question specific to employee, employer relationships, they can contact you, please, if you don't mind.
Sure. The number, five, six, two, six, five, three, three, two, zero, zero. And our, our firm is called Atkinson-Andelson. My email is asmith@alr.com.
Outstanding. Thank you very much, Ann, for sharing that our HR 6201 information. Very valuable, very valuable information. I have Mr. Andrew Kim. Uh, he's with Audit Board. Andrew, can you let us know how the coronavirus has affected your business and what you're doing to assist your employees at this time and to, to generate business? And just any ideas that you can share that might help some other business owner that's watching this webinar at this time, please?
Yep, definitely. Uh, so just, you know, quick background. Um, Andrew Kim, really appreciate being on, on this panel. Um, I'm a director at Audit Board. I work on the business development team. Um, background at Audit Board, we are a software company for, uh, large businesses or for their audit departments. Um, the two co-founders here, Daniel, Kim, and Jay Lee are actually, um, you know, Cerritos natives. They actually, uh, you know, went to Whitney High School nearby. So, you know, they did, they care deeply about the community of Cerritos, are very invested. Um, we're, we're proud to have our headquarters located in Cerritos. Um, you know, as of, uh, Monday of last week, our entire workforce has been, uh, working remotely. So, um, you know, I think, uh, there, there's obviously some challenges with that. Um, I wanted to focus the discussion of, um, you know, given that we're a technology company, just, you know, focus discussion on, you know, if you have a workforce, a group of people that are, you know, no longer in the office together, but are, uh, you know, have to, you know, get engaged with each other remotely, um, some of the software tools that we're using. Um, so obviously, we're, we're hosting this webcast on, on Zoom. Um, you know, our company uses that, um, you know, to host meetings with customers, to have internal meetings. So that's been, uh, you know, very successful for us. Um, I think even without any human interaction, at least, you know, seeing some of your team members face-to-face, um, via web conference is definitely a, a good way to get, get engaged with each other and keep that connection with your coworkers. Um, in terms of, you know, messaging, uh, we use, um, an application called Slack. So, um, you know, it's an instant messenger. I think, I think the good thing about using Slack, which is also free, I think all these services have a free tier, uh, is that, you know, you can create various, um, groups and threads. So it's, we found it's a bit more cohesive and, and real-time than, than email threads. So I think for kind of like real-time discussions, um, with some of your coworkers that you might not see in office anymore, um, that, that's a good tool to have. So, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to be flexible with everyone. We know everyone has, you know, various, uh, family circumstances at home. I think it's a very important time to, uh, you know, recognize that. Um, you know, obviously, um, you know, parents with, with children without childcare now, you know, we were being flexible on schedules for that. Um, you know, people with, you know, that, that have needs for computer equipment at home, you know, internet at home, we're, we're being very accommodated to that. Um, and even for the, the population of our employees, employees that, you know, live within the area. You know, we're reminding them to, you know, even during this time, it's important we support those local businesses of Cerritos. So, you know, if there's any restaurants that are still available that, you know, don't have dine-in but have takeout options, you know, it's very important that we, uh, you know, contribute back to the community, um, support businesses as any we can there. So it's, it's been, um, you know, it's been, uh, it's been okay for us. Um, but, you know, obviously, we're, we're trying to be supportive of everyone out there. And, um, you know, hopefully, you know, even small things like the, the tools we use to keep connected with each other can, can be helpful for some other businesses out there.
Outstanding. Thank you so much, Andrew Kim. And we, we appreciate you being on the call and appreciate your, sharing your ideas. Another one we could use is freec Conference Call dot com, if you don't want to have a video type of a situation. Freec Conference Call dot com is available just for phone call meetings as well. Outstanding. Thank you again, sir. Appreciate your participation. And that was a perfect segue. We spoke about restaurants, and we endeavor to support our restaurants, those that are still open. And Jason Lorenzo is with PF Chang's. Jason, would you like to share with us how, as a restaurant owner, we have a lot of restaurant owners who are members of Cerritos Chamber of Commerce? And, um, how, anything you can impart to assist those chamber members who, and other businesses as well, that you found that is helpful at this time, sir?
Yeah, of course. Um, my name is Jason. I'm, I'm the operating partner of PF Chang's. Um, thanks for having me a part of this call. Um, right now, we're, we're actually down roughly 70% in sales. Um, and I'm, I'm bow, I'm using maybe 25 to 30% of the, the employees that I've had. Uh, so right now, we're trying to divide the hours as much as we can, so our team still has, you know, can still get some hours. Um, we're off-premise dining only right now. Um, I think I speak for all the other restaurants that are open in the mall area at the Cerritos Center that we're just trying to let people know that we're, we're still, um, open and we're visible and try to find a way to, you know, let, let the community know that we're there and we're here to do takeout and whatever you guys need. So, yep, pretty much.
Outstanding. And, and we will, I, just the beginning of last, we sent out a, an email to everyone that's a member of the chamber, letting them know that we do have restaurants who are still open and that you can't eat there, but you can take out. So we'll continue to support you, Jason.
Thank you.
You know, we're, we're just about wrapped up our seminar. Anyone has any final thoughts or comments they'd like to share? No? Okay. You know, in the beginning, I spoke about it being the best of times, the worst of times. And for us at Lexus of Cerritos, of course, our, our retail side is pretty much closed. But our service is considered a essential service. So we still have a lot of service clients and lease return clients whose leases are coming due. But at this time, we're all in this together. So I'm confident that we will, uh, pull through. We were excited about the stimulus that was just approved and, and spoke to all of these new programs that are put in place. And the, the good thing about this, if there's a good thing to be seen, I, I, sometime I'll drive home and there's nobody. I pull into my garage and the garage is closed. And now I have time to walk the dog and walk with my wife. And I notice in the neighborhood, I'm seeing people I've never seen before. And there are two, three, four homes down. So that's a good thing. I've been calling small people, are you okay? Family members checking they haven't heard from in five years. They're checking in to make sure I'm okay financially and otherwise. So from that standpoint, it's been a good thing. But we hope that when, and it will, when all of this turns around, that people continue to care about their neighbors, checking on the, on that older lady, your neighbor that you haven't seen. Uh, please support, uh, PF Chang's and, and the other restaurants in the area. And, and that we, in our neighborhood, we live in Orange County, but we actually visited a restaurant. And I doubled my tip. I normally give 15 to 20%. I gave 40%, you know, because I want to make sure that they stay viable, plus the food is good. So, um, guys, it was wonderful. Each of you had plenty to do, I know, to take time out of your day to share. And I'm confident that in the ensuing weeks and, and, and months, everything you shared is going to be valuable to someone who gets an opportunity to see this webinar. So I appreciate you all. I thank you very much. Um, again, Ann Smith, thank you. Uh, attorney with Atkinson-Edelson Lawyer Red and Romo. Uh, Dr. Mary Sue, Superintendent of the AB's Unified School District. Uh, Andrew Kim with Audit Board. Uh, Jason Lorenzo, PF Chang, Managing Partner. Bradley Pollak with Long Beach Small Business Development Center. And, um, we thank you all. Great information was shared. You guys are awesome. Thank you so much, Ann.
Thank you.
Continue to, to stay, um, prayerful, stay, just, just know that this too shall pass. It's, it's going to turn around. Until then, um, may continue. And oh, by the way, let me say this and, and spread the word. If you have any questions, comments, concern, we have a wonderful panel here, but we have other people who could not be on the panel. If you have a question about business, if you need anything at all, the Chamber of Commerce is still open, albeit somewhat remotely, but we can get the information you need to you. We can share information. So if you need anything, the chamber is here for you. That's what, that's why we exist, to support business, support small business especially. So we appreciate you all, and thank you very much, and have, continue having an amazing day and a wonderful week.
Thank you.
All the best, guys. See you all. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.